How about my mic was muted, Greg? Did that make all the difference in the world? A great reminder that we all need to get back to pushing buttons in front of us, in which case I needed to unmute. Our audio issue is fixed. Okay. So our first applicant in front of us today, we're going, it looks to me like we're going in alphabetical order by last name, is Laura Baker. Good morning. How are you? We can't hear you. Hang on. Laura, it looks like you're muted. We'll, we'll allow you to unmute.
Thank you. I'm, I'm well. How's everyone doing?
Good. Why don't you kick it off by just telling us a little bit about yourself and then we've got questions. About yourself and why you're interested in serving on the city's planning commission?
Um, I live in downtown Montrose. I'm looking at City Market right now from my window. I feel like I am here in Montrose for a reason and I'm here to do the best that I can for the people here while I'm here. I came because of an AmeriCorps position, which I'm still very active with that community. And I'm interested because planning and planning how this city will unfold in the next 10, 20, 30, 50 years. I hope to keep a sense of community spirit, which I have felt moving here.
Great. Thank you very much. I will turn it over to, in no particular order, one of my fellow counselors to kick off some questions. Mr. Frank.
Off with a question, how do you feel about multifamily housing in Montrose?
I think that it is great when people can afford housing for their families. And so I think, I mean, if you're asking me, what do I think about it? I think we would need to have some more family affordable homes for young people that are starting out, for folks who work in the service industry and might be having a hard time saving for a home right now.
Thank you.
Now, the question I have is, what kind of a background have you had any experience in, in a planning housing market or access to it?
Nope. Access, I mean, my mom, my mom does real estate on the side in California. And so I guess I know a little bit in terms of housing, not necessarily real estate, but just the process of how people choose to come to a place, what would make our community interesting and desirable, maybe more in that way as opposed to the hard planning.
Either one of you?
Oh, am I? Okay. So I'm curious what you think about living downtown and how you regard that experience?
Um, we personally love it. I'm really grateful to have lived, I like, I want to show you, I literally live across the street from Old City Market, which has been so great during a pandemic. Um, I appreciate how close it is to Colorado Boy if we're wanting to pick up food or a beer. I like having the post office and being able to get to the government buildings so easily. I can just walk to Rotary meetings. So I, I personally like it. I know that there are some changes and goals with the comprehensive plan, and that's awesome. That's exciting because I think attractive locations have like a downtown.
What do you think are some of the biggest challenges facing our community as we move into the future?
Oh, I mean, I would say gentrification is the number one issue facing. I just, I, it's, it needs to be sustainable. If we are a wonderful community where people want to live, I think we should also be a just community. And I think we need to be making sure we have housing available again for people who otherwise may not be able to live here, but they work here. Does that make sense?
Great. Thanks. Any other questions for Laura Baker? Great. I thank you so much for your time and we appreciate it.
Yeah.
On our, our list is Clifford Dodge. And is Mr. Dodge here with us this morning? We, he's the one who couldn't be here today. Okay. Okay. You're not seeing Delphine Jado either. You know, it's possible, like with all of us in Zoom meetings over the last year, that she's looking desperately for the right login credentials or something like that. So if she shows up, let me know. Otherwise, we'll keep going. The next person on our list is Christine Person. Am I pronouncing that correctly, Christine?
Yes, you are.
Welcome. Thank you so much for being here this morning. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the city's planning commission?
Okay, um, I moved to Montrose seven years ago from Yaray, where I lived for 20 years. I am a Realtor in Montrose. I've had my real estate license for about 13 years now. I work for the real estate store that were right downtown Montrose and I started with Michelle Clifford here in 2014. I'm interested because I am downtown and I work downtown that I really appreciate, I guess, the downtown atmosphere and I've seen a lot of changes in, you know, businesses downtown and I, I feel like I have some ideas to help get more families downtown and, you know, keep people coming to the area. And also, you know, just being a part of something bigger than myself. I've always kind of wanted to do boards or, you know, volunteer in some way. I've been, you know, Girl Scout leader. I've raised kids, so I've been so busy with that, but I'm at the point in my career where I have more time where I feel like, you know, now's the time I can do something different.
Great.
One of the questions that we keep having come up in Montrose is market rate multifamily housing. What's your opinion on that?
Um, I feel that we need housing, especially low or especially for families or first time home buyers. Our average price now is about 350,000. And that's getting to the point where a lot of people that live and work in this community aren't able to afford to buy anything. And, you know, we're seeing now with the market, my last report I just did, they, we had 70 active listings in Greater Montrose, not including Alata or Weston, 70 active and about 117 under contract. So, I mean, we know there's a housing shortage everywhere, but yes, it's, it's definitely here and I definitely feel that we need more solutions for people that can't afford, you know, our current prices right now, some, something that will be more starter home. You know, to get people out of paying rent.
Think one of the questions I would ask, I'm assuming being in the business that you are, you're very familiar with the different zoning areas that we have within the city, both residential and city. Do you feel comfortable with those?
Um, as far as like commercial and residential, are all the different breakdowns?
I think all of them.
Okay. You know, I've gotten on many times and printed out, you know, for, especially for clients interested in particular areas, what the zoning is and what is allowed. I feel like I have a vague knowledge of that. But yes, I, I do understand that the different areas, you know, have different uses. I've gotten on the zoning maps many times to see, you know, where, what falls in which area. So I'm, you know, confident in how to do that. And I have, you know, a brief understanding of the different uses for each zone.
Great. Thank you. We'll go to Counselor Anderson.
Oh.
Okay.
Did you want to? Okay. So I, you, in the introduction, you made some comments about bringing more families downtown to live, I assume. And I wondered if you could say a little more about that, make some comments.
Well, not just to live, but just to bring them down with their families to support businesses downtown or restaurants. I love seeing that we have a lot of little eateries going in. I, I think that, you know, that is the right direction. It should be headed to have more like boutique eateries and shopping. I just think there's more we could do to get, you know, having the farmer's market down here is great too. But I think there's still more that, you know, I would love to see moms coming down, having lunch with, you know, their kids at a table, maybe Bicentennial Plaza here and supporting, you know, going to get coffee at San Juan Brews and, you know, just, you know, supporting more of, you know, the businesses in general. And then as far as housing, I do feel like, you know, in the last few years especially, I've seen a lot more older homes downtown get bought and people, you know, revamping and people that want to walk or bike to work or downtown to the horsefly. And I think the city, you know, having those incentives, you know, with the redo district and whatnot, I think it's a good way to try to keep that, you know, more people doing that and update some of our older buildings and homes in the area.
Yeah, Christine, you mentioned affordable housing and I'm, what do you see as a greater problem, the price of housing or wages in Montrose?
Um, well, they're both a problem for sure. You know, it's, when I first came to Montrose and was selling, you know, here about seven years ago, you could buy a house downtown for a hundred thousand. And you, that's just, you can't. There's nothing that price right now. And, you know, when you work at, you know, Walmart or some of these companies, yeah, you don't get much more than minimum wage. So I think, you know, both of them are a problem. I, now that people are working from home more, I think, you know, even as things start opening up again, there's still going to be a really good amount of people that can work from home. So I see more people and I've seen just personally, you know, selling homes to more people that can live anywhere and a lot of them are choosing more rural areas like us. So you know, having people that can come from California and buy a house for 350,000 and hey, that's a deal, you know, to people that, you know, at our wages here, 350,000, they couldn't afford the payment. So I, I mean, honestly, they're both a problem.
One of the things about being on a planning commission is that it has a very limited scope of authority. Are you going to be okay working within the boundaries of what you're allowed to suggest or do?
Um, so limited scope of authority saying like, I guess I don't understand what that means.
The planning commission has a very specific boundaries as far as what they're allowed to do or encouraged to do or participate in. It, wages is not one of them. I know it's, but an important part of our conversation. But it, once you find out what the, the scope of the authority of the planning commission is, would you be okay working within those boundaries?
Absolutely. Yeah.
I, I think my question kind of tags onto that. And it's interesting to think about your professional job as a Realtor and what that brings in, I think, some skills and some background information to a role as a planning commissioner. And yet, and yet you'd have to also keep them separate. And I think perhaps, I'll just add on, it, it's kind of an easy question, but do you think you can keep those two roles and responsibilities separate and not let one influence the other in, in an incorrect or unethical manner?
Um, yeah, I do think I could keep them separate. I mean, I think it, you know, it, it's nice that I have the insight to, you know, current market and can, you know, help answer questions if that comes up. But as far as if I'm making decisions for a particular, you know, whatever case, I could definitely just use it off the facts of, you know, what someone's wanting to do other than what, you know, I feel in my, you know, and, and leave the real estate end out of it. If that's what I needed to.
Great. Any other questions for this applicant? Great. Thank you so much for your time this morning and we're gonna keep going down the list. Applicant is Kevin Coons. Good morning. Can you please tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in serving on the planning commission?
Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Council. Yes, my wife and I moved here about six and a half years ago. And when we first got here, it was interesting. I, I would grab the daily paper and I wasn't sure if Montrose really had a plan for growth. Made us a little nervous. But I'm excited to say in the last six years, I've seen city council and city management change a lot. I've seen us have a really progressive forward thinking mentality about how we're going to grow Montrose in a smart way. I agree with a lot of the reports I've read. I believe Montrose in the next 20 years could be a 40,000 people. And I think to make sure that we handle that kind of growth, we need a strategic plan. We need to have a comprehensive plan. And I think being on the planning commission would give myself an opportunity, hopefully to give another voice on how that's going to look in the next 20 years. How we're going to make that happen. So I would be an honor for me to be on this commission and look at how that growth is going to look in the next 20 years.
Counselor Frank, do you want to kick it off with a question?
On, sorry. Currently, we're looking at a housing shortage in Montrose. And one of the things that keeps rising to the top is multifamily apartment type housing. And what is your opinion on that?
Well, I'd have to echo a lot with the, what the two previous folks said. I mean, when you look at the average home in Montrose is over 300,000 now. I think it was 2020 when I moved here, it's 350 now. So I think that's a big issue. So I, I think somehow we have to figure out how to build housing that can, the people that work in Montrose that, that, that are not making, you know, a hundred and $20,000 a year. I always chuckle a little bit when I see people say that affordable housing is $1,200 a month. That to me is not affordable housing. I think somewhere around eight, 900 is where we need to be. So single families, a mother with three children can afford to buy a home in Montrose. Like Christine said, a lot of people are moving here, whether it's from California, Texas, the East Coast. And it's great. They can afford half a million dollar homes. But the people that are going to work in Montrose to support business in Montrose don't make that kind of money. So I think we need a, we need to have an outside of the box thinking on how we're going to bring a more affordable housing to Montrose, what that looks like, where it needs to go, what part of Montrose do we need to grow in? So to answer your question, we have a shortage of homes. Everybody knows that. We don't have people that can afford homes unless you've got a lot of money. So I think it's an issue we need to address and the sooner the better because if I'm looking at it by this time next year, an average home in Montrose will probably $375,000. And it's going to keep going. And I don't want this to be a, be a Denver someday, but I think we're going to need, as we grow, to have housing that people can afford to get into with families.
My question, Kevin, would be, are you familiar with the zoning codes in the city?
Yeah, following a lot of the building and the development of the city, you know, I've, I follow some of those codes. I think what helps me a lot is, you know, as I put down in my letter that, you know, I oversaw the build out of 20 restaurants on the West Coast. So I've worked with planning commission, city council, citing ordinance, building ordinance, health departments, fire departments. So I've had to learn to work with people on those kinds of projects and how to listen and, and, and be part of the solution. So I do know how those zoning codes work. And I think it helps to know the ins and outs of working with general contractors, how they perceive a project compared to somebody else and be open minded in that process. So yeah, I feel comfortable in those, that arena.
Hey Kevin, um, so to stick with my theme here, uh, tell me a little bit about your thoughts on residences downtown.
Well, I know from living in different parts of the country with smaller communities like Montrose, the ones that I really saw that were healthy is always because they had awesome downtowns. And that was a cross between residential and commercial and also businesses. So I know in the last three years, whether it's Dart or whoever else that worked really hard at trying to build that downtown and put more equity and into downtown. So I think it'd be pretty awesome if we could figure a way maybe to go across Maine and Townsend heading, would be heading west and figure out how we could put some housing. If you have people that live downtown, obviously they're going to support downtown and people that have to drive into downtown. So I think a way of looking at how we could grow downtown Montrose with a mixture of both residential and retail would be a big win for the city.
Great. Thank you very much. And I will wrap up by asking you, I, I think you've touched on this a little bit, but what are some of the challenges that the city of Montrose faces moving forward?
Well, you're going to have traffic issues, obviously, which I think you've started to address. Housing is going to be big. I think a huge one that I know you all are working on is somehow we have to bring more businesses to Montrose that can pay more than a minimum wage. Because that ties hand to hand with, with housing. So as we keep growing Montrose residentially, I think we need to look commercially, what clean energy or clean businesses we can bring to Montrose that pay, that have good paying jobs. So that they can, you know, pay their fair share. They're, they're buying goods here. They're increasing sales tax for the city. They're doing all those things. But I think at the end of the day, you can build housing, but if nobody can afford to buy it, you're going to have a lot of empty housing. So I think we need to make sure we mix building affordable housing with finding better paying jobs. And I think that's going to be the challenge as we grow Montrose.
Thank you very much. Okay. In keeping us going here, we'll move on to our next applicant. Richard Rogers. Good morning. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in serving on the city's planning commission?
Sure. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk with you all. About myself, I enlisted in the United States Army in 1968, was discharged in '71. Moved to Austin, Texas, spent the next 41 years in Texas. Got a bachelor's in government from UT Austin, enrolled in graduate school, School of Architecture, got a master's in science degree in community regional planning. After, after I graduated, I began working in the workforce development field. You have a copy of my resume, the different places I have worked, both state and local government. In April 2019, we moved to Montrose. My wife has some family here. I have family in the Denver area. We, I guess I live downtown. I live with North Fifth and Nevada. From my perspective, living in downtown, we looked at real estate pretty much all over the city. This is where I wanted to be. The houses have character. The trees are large. The parks are great. I live between Buckley Park and Lions Park. Fantastic area to live. I guess it's also considered the redevelopment area in the city. I was interested in the planning commission. Two reasons. Number one is I do have the sense of community service. I feel you should invest in your community. My wife and I were part of the envisioned 2040 workshops. I found, I was very impressed with the process that the planning staff had worked out. The, the work they've done, what's available online for people to review as the plan builds for a town this size. That's an amazingly advanced planning system. I can see that the city is moving in a progressive manner towards empowerment of individuals and also balancing business with quality of life. I have an interest in all those aspects. I feel like I could bring a sort of a unique perspective to the planning commission because of my background in workforce development. As we have talked about, housing is a big issue. Jobs is a big issue. I think there are ways that the city council can address the jobs situation by enhancing the ability of entrepreneurs to come to this area and develop a business. You're not going to get a Fortune 500 company moving in probably. But you can get entrepreneurs moving in, creating five, six, seven, 10 jobs here, there. Very often higher paying jobs than service industry or retail. I think that's a key area for the city in general to look at. I understand the planning commission has a limited scope, but those elements all fit together. And I think I can contribute to that.
So to continue my questions with the same theme is one of the things that we're dealing with right now in Montrose is apartments and multifamily dwellings and units and affordable housing. What's your thoughts on that?
I feel you have to have a, an array of housing opportunities for individuals. I think as Kevin even mentioned, there are ways to address multifamily housing beyond just the big ugly block apartments. And I think those should be investigated, that we do need multifamily housing. We do need to integrate housing in terms of income available to apply to housing. I'm an advocate of a living wage, which is tied to the ability to afford a housing. You have to have multifamily housing in the plan, but it doesn't have to be considered a big block apartments or a nice sort of there. There are other creative ways to address multifamily housing, I believe. And I, I think the city of Montrose would be open to various approaches.
You. Well, I had spoken before about the knowledge of zoning throughout the city, both residential and commercial. Are you familiar with those at all?
I'm familiar with, generally with zoning elements, having done community regional planning training back years ago. I have not worked in, in land use planning. I've got a zoning map on my computer right now. And the, the general concepts of residential and business, different levels within those, I understand all that. And I also think there should be some understanding that sometimes zoning assignments can change depending upon changing in situations. So they're not locked in stone. But I came from parts of Texas where zoning will get you run out of town. I'm a firm believer in, in planned development and using zoning as a way to address that.
I'll continue my theme. Um, you live close to downtown and you made some real positive comments about that. But tell me your thoughts about actual residences right in the heart, like on Main Street, First South, First North. Give me some thoughts about that.
Well, again, in, in, to have a vibrant downtown community, I think you do need different levels of housing in terms of apartments or, you know, condominiums. We have some old houses that have been divided up into apartments. You have to have a variety. Having people living close to downtown, having people moving into the downtown area is a definite plus. Getting people out of their cars, any way, shape or form is a good idea. And it's also what helps create a vibrant community. I've seen many small towns in Texas that died because there was no downtown development. There were people living out in the hinterlands in the county, but not in the cities. So I think you need a strong, vibrant community downtown, both looking at so-called urban professionals or creatives as well as the ability for people with a lower income. So called urban professionals or creatives as well as the ability for people in a lower income. Brackets to be able to afford to live in the downtown area. I think Montrose has a a unique opportunity because you already have a pretty good start. On developing that vibrant downtown community that draws people in. The other day I drove by the the Tesla charging stations. Just off of Main Street. Amazed that a town of this size would have that kind of an investment. That level of forward thinking to help bring people into the downtown area. I think that's really important.
And lastly, what do you see as one of our biggest challenges as a city moving forward?
Well, of course, housing is on everybody's mind and housing continues to be. Probably the major challenge, but I think tied with that, as Kevin also mentioned, is jobs. Losing. The Russell Stover plant had a big impact. There are very few of those kinds of manufacturing jobs available. Again, I think. We need to try to encourage entrepreneurship. In the community, bring people in from outside, investment strategies. I think there are a number of different vehicles that could be looked at. You have to bring job creatives. To to Montrose. Of course, the kinds of jobs you would prefer. As the city has done with the. The outdoors investment with. Outdoor recreation companies trying to focus on one or two industries. That's very good, but I wouldn't limit myself to that necessarily. So jobs and housing are the two key elements, but you also have to balance quality of life with that. There is a, as as other folks have mentioned, there is a probably a definite trend towards. Significant growth for this area and we need to be thinking ten years out. Not just two or three years out, but I think your planning department already does that.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you to to all of our planning commission applicants who joined us this morning by Zoom. We really appreciate it. I think. Our community is quite fortunate to have such a great caliber of applicants to the planning commission. You all are to be commended for throwing your hat in the ring and and hearing that call for community service. So thank you very much. And council will be making decisions and moving forward and our city clerk will be the one communicating the process going forward. With all of you. Thank you so much. Anything else that I didn't touch on that I needed to? Okay, great. Thank you all. Next on our agenda this morning are our discussion items. The first one is an intergovernmental agreement with the Montrose County. With Montrose County for the signalization of US five fifty Enchepita Drive. And this looks like we're going to hear from our city engineer Scott Murphy on quite a few items this morning. So good morning, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Came to light that the warrants appear to be met. There would be more studies to confirm for sure, but that really. Started to prompt the discussions with the county of working to signalize this intersection. The intersection is owned by, or it's at the intersection of five fifty, which is a Colorado Department of Transportation highway. And Chapita Drive, which is a county right of way. However, the city does have several residential subdivisions that do feed into that. Into that street, so we're partnering in a primary stakeholder in this project. Based on the traffic counts we've done, the estimates about forty percent of the traffic on Chapita could be attributed to city subdivisions. Other remainder to county traffic that's passing through the area. So knowing that we're both partners in the project, we started the conversations with the county. And worked on a framework of this IGA that you have before you to work on implementation of the signalization project. So the IGA proposes, I'll just kind of give a general overview of the terms of the IGA instead of diving in line by line, but. Generally proposes that we split the cost sixty forty. So the city, so in according with the with the traffic. Split. So sixty percent would be paid by the county, sixty or forty percent by the city. That county would be the primary lead on the project as the owner of the right of way of the signalized road. So Chapita. They're the ones that actually sign the access permit with the Colorado Department of Transportation that allows a signal to go in. With that, we would work, you know, collectively on contractor procurement, designer procurement, things of that sort. And I'll kind of dive into the schedule because that's probably the most important part. So if council were to approve this IGA, we would work on the design right off the right off the bat. Get a RFP out to hire the design team and get through design. In twenty twenty one. This is an unbudgeted project, so that would be either out of budget surplus or a supplemental. Budget out of the reserve should we go over or be trending over towards the end of the year. Hard to talk in a mask. I need to loosen this thing. That's fine. Okay, perfect. Back to our scheduled programming again. Thank you. So, yeah, we won't want to do construction in the middle of the, it's not a very invasive project. A lot of the work will be taking place on shoulders and things of that sort, but. There would be some traffic impact, so I don't know exactly what those would look like yet. We would want to target construction. More in the shoulder seasons, so you get a lot of the heavier impacts between summer and winter travel peaks. And so that schedule works towards that. So we'd look to budget the lion's share of the project, which would be construction. In the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three budgets, so that construction element would would split between two years. At a budgetary level, figure the product would be no more than two million. Initial estimates are a little lower than that, but just to give us a little buffer as far as agreements go. We put the cap at two million, again, split sixty forty between the county and the city. And then, see, what are the elements? You know, if we were to go over that, that would obviously come back to both boards, both the county commissioners and the city council. If.
Okay. Scott, go ahead.
Actually, I'll just say we switched our AD system. So if you thought you lost us or you were confused, we switched over. Because we were having connections and connection issues on that one. Nothing happened during that pause. We all just sat there and waited for IT to give us the go ahead. You didn't miss anything and Mr. Murphy will resume talking about the signalized intersections.
Do you want me to use the main mic?
No, we're picking you up on these mics.
So I'll just stop that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm checking to see if the counties want to join. Looks like they're not here. Okay, so I think the only other thing I would say is Dave Frank was kind of the liaison for council through the. Negotiation process with the county. So I guess turn it over to him to see if he has anything to add and then also I'll put it up for questions.
During our discussions, one of the things that rose to the top was that we could potentially kick this down the road for five or ten years. Until traffic actually triggered the need for that. In our discussions, what we came up with was that we would much rather be proactive with the county. And deal with potential problem before it becomes a problem. In our discussions, one of the things that we discussed was that. This is beneficial to all the citizens and residents of Montrose. In the long run. And by getting it done now before it becomes a problem, we're to head off a lot of the headaches come down later on. The county is in substantial agreement with everything. This is really a lot of good hard work from Mr. Murphy. On making this document, making it all airtight of what we had discussed. And this is good work and documents that let us move forward in a way it's going to be really beneficial for our traffic patterns and for our outline residents. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. That's a great job.
Questions?
I just have a question. Was there already discussion at all about maybe changing the speed limit to a lower rate for that area?
Yeah, that's a great question. So with signals comes will likely come a speed limit reduction. So that'll be part of their design when they'll look at. It's hard to do now because eighty fifth percentile speed does trend a lot higher, but this signal. The first signal in town is always the hardest one to get people to slow down for. So think of like, you know, Liza, the only signal. It has the advanced warning detection system. So when you're, if you're about to hit the yellow, it starts flashing and tells you. This would probably have a similar approach, at least on the northbound and. And with that, you know, it starts to make it create an urban feel. You have step down. Speed limits coming into it, so.
So you don't foresee any chance of reducing that at the present time before we start any work on the signal?
We, yeah, we've talked to C dot a lot about that. They generally won't. So those are established at the state level based on a pretty complex regimented. Kind of criteria based on numbers and they've looked at the area and kind of told us repeatedly that it it wasn't qualified to. Be or if anything, it might even go up if we were to ask them to study it. So we've been careful for what we asked. That that brings up a good point too about C dot in general. So, you know, they could be a potential partner on the project. But the scale of the project and that we have so many stakeholders really felt that it made sense to be a city and county project. That allows it to go through probably a year, a year and a half faster and quite a bit more efficiently financially. City, the C dot. Doesn't have any dedicated pool or pots of money towards us, towards us sort of thing, these kind of applications. A lot of times they do fall back onto the adjacent jurisdictions. And so, you know, if we, there's a chance they could financially participate, but it may be two to five years out by the time we get through. Even finding the funding and then another one to two through typical processes, just because it's, you know, sometimes there's federal money involved and it gets pretty complicated. So. That's kind of driven the drive or kind of driven the decision to to work locally between the city and the county to streamline the process.
Like to just make a comment. Over the years. Numerous citizens have sent emails and contacted me personally and said what a horrible intersection that is. So I want to thank you and Dave Frank and the county commissioners for all. Working on this and and moving it forward. And I just. I think, you know, maybe the place take sounds a little high, but when you're talking about a human life. It's definitely worth it. So I just urge you and the county commissioners to keep moving forward and and thanks for addressing this.
Absolutely. I think I'll add the counselor Anderson's thoughts. We have got repeated emails about this intersection and. And asking us to be part of a solution. So I'm glad to see that the city is part of a solution and I think that this speaks to the great. Relationship that the city and the county currently have and it allows us to partner on projects. Instead of just pointing fingers and and pass a buck to the other, we can get together and work for all of the citizens and I'm really proud of that.
Just one another comment I would make. We we talked a little bit about the problem with the right turn lane that exists there now. Isn't there anything that we can do with that ahead of this major rework of that intersection that would help relieve some of that? Back up.
Yeah, so you're talking about the relatively short stack length or more or less kind of non-existent right turn lane coming off of Chapita towards southbound five fifty?
Yes.
Yeah, so possibly we haven't looked too close. It's the it's the county's right of way. So if we were to do something, it'd have to be. You know, probably be under their crews in concert with us. The delays are reasonable right now. You know, they're not great. But it is within acceptable levels of service. So my my take is, you know, construction project is coming relatively soon. And we had to put something in that would just be in the way or have to get torn out because inevitably that leg of the intersection would be reconstructed with this project. Including some, you know, redo of the radiuses and stuff to make those that that transition a lot smoother. I think there were some access issues over there also. So. Certainly could be done, but whatever got put in would likely get torn out with the project and redone. And so I would I would recommend. Living with it until the project comes, knowing that it's right around the corner.
Thank you very much for that information. I think we look forward to seeing that project move forward. And construction projects, we all have learned they take a lot of time, but that timeline actually seems pretty expedited. So thank you. The next item on our agenda is also for you, and that is the Woodgate Road realignment construction contract. Moving another big project forward.
Yeah, they've all come together this week. Let me see if I can screenshot. Might have. So seems like every council meeting for the last three months, we've been talking about the Woodgate realignment, this should be kind of the last of it as far as the project goes. So I won't go too deep into the history since we've been talking about it so much, I will say that on Thursday, we did close on all of the property. So all the right of way, the two houses, all that has been secured and recorded, so. Which is very exciting, that's been yours, yours in the making, so. Going to concurrent with that, we've been running the bidding for the project. It's still showing, okay, good. And so this, what's before you today is discussions of the bidding results and contract recommendation to move to construction. Would, for anybody who's joining us for the first time, I wouldn't make reference to our capital projects page, www.movmo.co. There is a page here dedicated to Woodgate with a lot of the history of the project map, so you can see the overview. Some of the, a couple of videos talking about how we got to where we are and what we're trying to accomplish here. You know, we'll say that, you know, the the primary driver, we have this bottleneck on Townsend. This realigns Woodgate to connect to East Oak Grove, really setting us up for long term. So, you know, not that all congestion in this area will go away, it certainly won't, there's a lot of vehicles in this area of town. But you combine this with the future roundabout in that area, future extension of Rio Grande, and then a reconstruction. And widening of Oak Grove and Townsend, and this area will, you know, it just puts us on on track to this area to match our growth that's going to continue to happen. As traffic pressures build in this area, if left alone, really not many options, it would, as that grows the curves, there's really nowhere for that traffic to go. And we would hit gridlock in that section of the system, which would be problematic, so. But beyond that, if you want more detail, please go to the webpage. Find everything you've ever wanted to know about the Woodgate project there. The project was designed, we started on design back in 2020, was designed by Delmont Consultants here in town, and. It looks like it's not tracking anymore. Oh, you're okay, so don't look at that screen, I'll look at it, okay. So we got four bids, or received four bids, the lowest bid was Mountain Valley Contracting at 1.4 million. This is for the road project itself, there's other product elements I'll go into in a minute, but this is for the primary. Road construction, utility construction, and then the, there's two houses that get demolished with the project for demolition of those houses. The contractor, or the lowest, low bidder in Mountain Valley is considered qualified to perform the work, and we have done several projects with them over the last years. They've generally, last couple of years have won our move mode contract. They did have done a couple of utility projects for us, they did Cerro Reservoir also. And the bridge on our route. We do have a couple of other expenditures that are expected with this project. Another one is the. Okay, straight, is 59,100 to the designer Delmont Consultants. So that contract covers two things, one is survey layout, we like to use the project designer for all the project survey layouts. So that if there's ever any issues that come up, they can be remedied in real time or caught. And then also, so that we don't get discrepancies between designer intent and and construction. Now, there are other of those, if any technical issues or surprises come up, they're kind of on a non-call basis to address any issues that come up. Another, there's there's two others, one is not explicitly on the memo here, I'll talk about, because we just learned about it on Friday. But one of them is relocation of some pretty significant communications cabinets, if you drive by there, actually, I think the picture's in here. As you drive by on Woodgate, you probably used to see in these ones right here, but hidden in the bushes, there's this super cabinet. That's a, it's a regional, or a regional terminal is the name of it, for CenturyLink. Pretty significant relocation effort to get that moved outside of the new roadway. That comes through this area here. And so, because it's in an established easement. And we're moving the road, kind of getting into a gray area as far as. Obligations for relocation, talked to several utility attorneys and think that, you know, this is kind of a unique case that we do have to pay for the relocation here. So that is, we'll pay actual prices on that, based on their initial estimates, we expect that to come in less than 225,000. And then the third expense, so those, there's two houses that are getting demolished as part of the project, and they require some asbestos abatement. We didn't know the scope of that, but we do have a generalized, when I wrote this memo, but as of Friday, so we closed on Thursday. We got the asbestos, the environmental consultants that go in and do the testing and tell us what needs to be remediated in there. Looks like it's probably going to be about 30,000 per house in asbestos mitigation. Couple of ways to handle that, one thought is to, if council would be open to it, would be to just add an additional 60,000 of contingency into the construction contract at this stage. And then we can solicit bids and run that through the general contract, just like we would any other fair. Our seat quotes and then run it through their contract, just like we would any other of their subs. To streamline the process, otherwise we could bid that independently and come back for a separate contract approval without add about six weeks to the overall schedule.
What is the date of construction on those houses, do you know?
Sixties or seventies, if I had to guess, I I did know at one point, but I forgot, but some, somewhere back here, it says 60 or 70.
Yeah, because one of the things that the public might not know is that asbestos was very prevalent. In construction in the 60s and 70s as an insulation material and as a paint binder. And as well as, you know, some of the other applications of it, so a lot of houses built in the 60s and 70s. We all have asbestos.
Yeah, it's a very good point, it's not anything overly weird for, or anything abnormal for a house that would demo this from this vintage, yep, certainly. And and we want to do it right, so you know, some people, there are state regulations that govern demolition of structures and things of that sort. Obviously, so we go through, hire professionals to do the evaluation, hire professionals to do the mitigation. To really do it, go and remove the asbestos materials in a controlled environment prior to demolition of the structure, so that we aren't releasing that. Out into the environment and to neighboring properties, so, yeah, absolutely, yep, it's a good one.
Is there any, any value to consider relocating those homes?
They're in pretty rough shape, so one thing, we're working with some local nonprofits to salvage what we can. But again, we don't want to do anything that's fast of any walls, because of some of the liabilities. So the city will actually be going in, it will take whatever is salvageable and putting that out to the side for these nonprofit groups to pick up, and we're working with that. To go to various, several agencies throughout the community, there's not much of value in there, but, yeah, the houses structurally are pretty compromised. It kind of worked out, the owner that owned these houses owned the rest of the land, so it was all part of one land deal. You know, they recognized that they were becoming a liability, there's some you can see are actually leaning over. So it's kind of a win-win, helps the project, but also helps us artists, it gives us all means to get those houses demolished.
I like the idea of having upping the the contract and including the asbestos mitigation in a contingency budget. Under that contract, instead of doing it separately, I think you were saying that it might affect the timeline by as much as six weeks otherwise.
Yep, yeah, it would just help streamline that, and probably end up with the same result, we're still going to reach out to multiple, there's only so many suppliers in the region for that kind of stuff, so. And then diving into schedule and traffic control, so if approved, we would look to award the contract on April 20th. Construction would start shortly after, a lot of the work will focus on some of the utility relocations ahead of time, because they're the longest lead. So there might not be a lot of work going on right at the very beginning, because we don't want to tear up a bunch of stuff just to have a gap in the schedule later. So we want to really compress the schedule, given the impact to the public. And so, construction is expected to go through November. And then we have it written that the contractors, God has to work to leave the existing Woodgate Road open as long as possible. So there's a lot of work they can do on the sides with utilities, but even on the northern reaches of the project, without affecting traffic really anywhere. And so, I would say June, I think, is what I had in here, is when we probably look to finally close Woodgate. And once it closes, it would stay, remain closed until construction is complete and the new road is is open.
And we're working with local businesses to keep access to those businesses open and and everything like that.
Yep, so I'll, let me show, kind of give an overview map here, looks like that's coming through. So on the top left here, you can see the Woodgate realignment project, so a couple of different kinds of. What's that?
We don't see your map. Okay, just came back.
Okay, you can see that there, okay. So the Woodgate realignment here on the, you know, top left of your screen. So what we have here, I call them soft closures, so for traffic coming down Woodgate Road, we would have. Special signs to say business access open, have openings in the traffic control to allow people through. But we don't want, you know, it's a fine balance of trying to strike between access to these businesses, you know, so think like Starbucks, the car wash, Denny's in here. But also, we don't want people to go, oh, no, I got stuck, and end up shortcutting, you know, taking all of Woodgate Road traffic and dumping it on to, you know, Snuffles Arbor Way, shortcutting through the Vista San Juan neighborhood there. Is it still up on your guys' screen?
No, I think it might be.
It is on the public, it's looks like.
Everybody who's watching on this, you can see it, but us here in council chambers, you don't, so.
So I'll keep talking, and then if it comes back. And so, the initial cut is, we plan to put closures right that metroway to kind of push people on to Townsend and around that way. You'll have secondary closures on Snuffle Street, and you know, as you go further, that you you have to go through the openings in the barricades. So it's trying to say local traffic only and encourage, discourage that shortcut. Help with that also to remind for people coming down Oak Grove, we are going to put closures up on Arbor Way and Imogen up at the north end. Same thing, to try and just remind people that the project is there, because a lot of times, you know, they'll cut through and then realize, oh, I'm stuck, you know, that you're doubling your traffic in the neighborhood. So we're trying to do that as our first cut, knowing that this is going to be challenging it, you know, I always say. Detours and traffic problems that are created during construction are a testament to the importance of the road, this is very important artery for us. The intersection of Woodgate and Townsend, obviously, you know, and that road goes away, that'll be closed. You know, both during construction, once the closure hits and permanently. And so if if we see a lot of abuses here, we'd probably have to go to a more drastic route, which may include hard closures at Snuffles. And routes, all neighborhood traffic out to Odell, that's pretty impactful for, from an EMS standpoint, emergency response, we also don't want. Ambulances having to take a long way around it in an emergency, or the police, and so that's a last resort, if we really have a severe problem with shortcutting through here, we would look at something. Of kind of altering those traffic patterns all the way, so you still keep all the local access open to the car wash, obviously residents on Arlen Road. But route traffic that's destined for Vista San Juan neighborhood. To go down Odell and enter through their southern entrance, so that's that's not in the plan currently, but that's that's a fallback, and we'll kind of adapt as necessary. To make sure we're balancing. Detour traffic, business traffic and residential traffic and shortening traffic, trying to find that sweet spot. Which, you know, it'll, remember the roundabout, you know, that was a tough one, too, people, people do some pretty weird things when you put a barricade in. Speaking through to the financials. Are so any questions on the traffic before I dive into that? So the overall budget included lines in the capital improvement fund, the water fund and the sewer funds, there are sewer lines and water line replacements as part of this job. So we, because we don't want to open up a new street and have a water line, old asbestos cement water line break underneath the roof. And so between those three, we have 1.94 million budget for the project. So if you take us 1.69 and add 60,000, as we know, the likely number for abatement now. Still keeps us, you know, approximately 200 or 190,000 under budget collectively, so. Yeah, looking. Glad to see that, you know, the market's kind of all over right now with, obviously with COVID and a lot of demand. So, you know, we always get nervous of bid openings, but we're very pleased to see it come through very favorable. I'm excited to move forward.
Great, thank you very much, any questions about this contract? Okay, we'll be seeing this as an upcoming council meeting or an official vote, thank you very much. Okay, next is also to you, Mr. Murphy, and that is the Moving Montrose Forward 2021 Street Maintenance Bid Results and Potential Pass.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so this one, I'm presenting mostly as bid results, because there are some decision points at this point to make regarding the financials of it. But nevertheless, so starting in 2018, we kind of kicked off our Moving Montrose Forward effort, which is kind of a concerted effort in. Traffic mobility, street maintenance, wrecked trails, pedestrian connectivity, all the above, large investment in our infrastructure. To set us up for what what we're seeing, which is, you know, a large wave of of development and interest in Montrose upon us. Setting us up going into that next chapter. So part of that was street maintenance, a concerted effort, we call it our annual Move Mo Street Maintenance Project, and that's what this is. Where we have a line specifically towards contracted street maintenance, so just so everyone knows how the kind of departments are laid out. So the streets department does routine street maintenance, a lot of the smaller patching, crack sealing, some smaller concrete stuff, things of that sort, street sweeping, all of those are done in-house. But we can do that and ramp up and do millions of dollars of work in the summer and then not have anything for them to do in the in the winter. And so some of the larger maintenance efforts and capital construction, we use contractors for to help kind of swell up for those types of work in the summer. And that's what this is geared towards, so it's also specialty work, such as slurry seals, which we don't have the equipment for, which I'll get into. But again, to make reference to our. Capital Projects and Street Maintenance webpage, Move Mo has tabs dedicated to street maintenance, where you can go and learn about all the different types of street maintenance that are performed. We also have a street maintenance plan, which is part of our capital plan, the link for it is here on the memo here, if anybody wanted to read that. Kind of lines out the situation in the streets, where we are, how we model them. How they're managed, the different types of things, and how different funds are allocated, so for whatever funding is available. We don't, we don't want to spend it all on roads that have failed, we don't want to spend it all on roads that haven't failed, we want to find a sweet spot between. Surface treatments, preventative maintenance, and fixing some of the bad roads that, you know, through the recession and things of that sort. Some of our roads are in rougher shape, and there's no choice but to rebuild them. So, you know, it kind of varies by year, where those where those pots move, but overall, we do try and strike a balance between preventative maintenance and reconstruction. And also, you know, utility work and things go with some of those projects too, but one general tenet is to keep the good roads good, as far as the cost effectiveness goes. I always say it's cheaper to paint your house than replace your siding, is the analogy I use. And so we have modeling, asset management, modeling software that tells us where the best bang for your buck is. As far as if you put money here, it's over a 20-year life, you know, it's going to cost X per square foot versus if you focus it here. You don't want to spend too much money focused on the bad roads and let all the other ones go bad, now you, at 10 times the cost, you can't maintain any of it. So like anything, striking a balance between new and old. And. Getting the biggest bang for a buck with the resources we do have. So that's very high level thing of of asset management, but if anybody wants to get in the weeds on that, happy to talk asset management with anybody for for days.
Scott, didn't, didn't one, one time we did a study, didn't we come up with something that says we're trying to have all streets within a 20 or 25-year cycle?
Sort of perfect world, Jim can chime in a little bit here, you're touching every street every six to eight years in some fashion, you know, so obviously. Crack sealing is your biggest bang for your buck as far as keeping your roads intact. After that, you get into chip seals, slurry seals, micro-surfacing overlays, and then rebuilds. You know, ideally, you know, if funding were perfect, and we're not the only ones that struggle with this, every small, every, every town, even big cities. Every town in America, it's it's street maintenance is is difficult to keep up on financially, it's just a really big burden. So in a perfect world, we're hitting them every five to 10 years with some kind of surface treatment. In a perfect world, you can maintain forever, assuming they were built right, inspected right and constructed right. Reality of it is, is, you know, it's, we don't live in that perfect world. And so I think crack ceiling wise, they're on a six-year, eight-year, eight-year rotation, where they're hitting all of town every eight years. This work is kind of geared towards trying to get some of the surface treatments behind on those same blocks. And so if they're coming in and and patching and crack sealing, you know, we're slurry sealing a year or two behind. And so if they're coming in and and patching and crack sealing, you know, we're slurry sealing a year or two behind. Um and I'll talk about slurry seals for a second. It's like a chip seal. It's a kind of micro surfacing of the roadway, but it's not a chip seal. You you say there were chip seal and pitchforks come out generally in residential areas. A lot of people don't like them um because the roughness on the street, uh obviously tripped windshields and things of that sort. But within residential areas, chip seals don't make the best sense either, um because you don't have a lot of that rubber tire traffic to beat those chips in and a lot of them end up getting wasted.
Could you explain what a chip seal is for most people that don't know that? It's just you lay a surface of tar basically and then put rocks on the top and people drive and pushes that rocks in, correct?
Yep, so it's a, yep, exactly. So it's a asphaltic base that goes down, a layer of chips through a chip spreader gets spread across the top. And then they get rolled in with their um pneumatic rollers at the time of application. Um but it also does rely on the traffic over time over those next couple of months as it cures to really beat those in. Um so areas that don't get any kind of wheel traffic at all are prone to um come back apart to some degree, you know, it won't all come off, but um a slurry seal by contrast is, um we did them a couple of years ago. We did on San Juan, uh Real Grand is a slurry seal. What's that neighborhood off of Cirque Way, uh Cirque Way and go between Cirque Way and Niagara, um west of sixty-seven hundred, we did a couple of years ago. Um that was a chip and a slurry. The roads were far enough gone that we wanted to add a little bit of structure. Um so we put down a chip and then covered it with a slurry seal. These will just be slurry seals in some of the areas we're proposing. Um and it's a black kind of fine sand asphaltic coating um that really gears, you know, kind of two things. So one of the biggest act or things working against us with our streets here is uh UV breakdown. And so we may not have a lot of traffic loading, a lot of heavy structural load on the roads and especially in residential areas. Um but we have a, oh, you know, it's why everybody lives here. We have a lot of great sunshine, um and we're high elevation. And so the over time, the asphalt becomes a brittle. Um so over time, the asphalt becomes a brittle and starts to, you know, just you just lose one rock at a time. All of a sudden, your asphalt's half inch to an inch lower. Um that's an extreme case, but there are places where it's unraveled to that degree. And and so this looks to, it's a good, good analogy for it is put sunscreen on the road. To uh keep it ducked or, you know, not duck, yeah. That's the word. Anyway, uh just keep it soft of sorts, you know, not uh not getting embritled and start unraveling over time. Um so uh with that, it seems like the screen share working in the packet is a map of the areas that uh would get hit by this project. Uh so we broke it into two contracts. As we got into bidding, we learned that do asphalt contractors necessarily want to manage the slurry seal guys and vice versa. And so uh in order to keep markups down and keep make the dollars go as far as possible and um just help on the coordination front, um we split these into two contracts. Uh so the first one was a slurry seal, I think A one. Chip seal was the lowest bidder. We got two bids on that one. Three hundred and nineteen something going off the memory here.
Three eighteen, four hundred and twenty-four cents.
That one, yep, thank you. Everybody. Uh so and if you go down to the map, so the area that we're looking to, there is an excerpt included with the bid packet. Uh the area we're looking to chip or slurry seal is east of sixty-seven hundred uh between Niagara and Oak Grove. Um kind of American Village area is kind of how it's locally known. Uh that area was chips or crack sealed last year or the year before uh by city crews. And again, kind of getting behind them on a similar rotation. Um these are streets that were built early two thousands era. And so this will be the first kind of major treatment they've they've received. Um they're in pretty decent shape. Um these are the ones where it's our most, this is kind of our sweet spot to do these kinds of applications. Um would have also liked to have gone north of Niagara into Ravens Crest area also. Um but funds were limited on this one. But uh um so that area hopefully would be not too far behind. Um, you know, as you start, if you look at the map of street uh uh street condition, as you kind of get, start going rings towards the core of town, it gets goes from green to yellow to red, you know. And so want to keep the green green and then start focusing on some of these interior areas. Um so uh the other element of the work is the patching, which is focused on two areas. One was South Woodgate. So last year we meant to do it, but the contractor uh it was a kind of last minute funds were available on streets that were left over. Um but the asphalt contractors were tied up that we couldn't get it done. So um that's a carryover from last year. It's patching. Uh so fixing a lot of the failed pavement areas of Woodgate south of Otter Road. And then the rest of the project focuses on patching failed pavement areas west of Townsend Avenue. Essentially, the worst area, so what we, how we design these products, we design them in-house, but um if you ever wonder why you see a city engineer out on a bike or an engineering staff member out on a bike, we're not just joyriding. Um we actually go up and down every single one of these streets and mark out the areas uh that we would first start with, would like to patch. Um and then we go back with and we kind of rate them and then we go back uh with the reality check once kind of know what budget's available and kind of fine tune it down to take care of the worst of the worst. And so from that entire area, the areas here are focused on the the worst areas requiring patching. Um and this area is being cracked seal this year or next year?
Yep, this year.
Uh this year by by street crews. So I'm getting in to try and get these areas that are hopefully to follow up with some sort of surface treatment um shortly after. Um you know, again, these areas are kind of further gone and so but we can't just ignore them either, you know, because some of these pavement distresses are pretty severe that you you're threatening uh right ability.
Just for clarification for the public that although we do have this maintenance plan in place, if you find a pothole, you don't have to wait for our maintenance plan to cover that pothole. Then you can go to the Better Montros app. And our public work and our city staff will respond if you report a pothole. So we have plans in place to to maintenance all these streets, but there is an immediate fix. So we have that option for the public to know you can deal with a pothole, get download a better Montros app. And you can report issues on that app and it's the city staff is really very, very fast about responding to those.
Yeah, thank you. It's a great point. Um so on the street patching side of things, we got, we received three bids. Uh the low bid was Skip Houston Construction out of Montrose uh at six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, seventy cents. Um Skip view uh constructed River Bottom Drive for us in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So we do have uh recent positive experience working with them. They're great to work with. Definitely won't have any reservations about recommending them. Um I'll go into traffic control real quick just so people can understand what the impacts would look like. Um so the, there is some patching on South Woodgate, as I mentioned, but also West Ogden, which uh in front of, I think in front of Home Depot in Chili's there. Um so those elements of work are a little more invasive there on our minor arterials that see a lot more traffic. Um and so uh those won't allow any closures. So on Ogden, those would be lane shifts. So you have one lane each direction throughout construction. Um and then on Woodgate, it's a really tight corridor. So it'd be one lane each or um one lane alternating with flaggers. Uh somewhat lower volume there, but the way around is pretty long. And so um we kept that one, at least one line open during construction. Uh the remaining patching, most of our patching work will be on, you know, lower volume or residential type of streets. And so you can expect to see uh holes open and then within seven to fourteen days, uh those would be patched behind. They, you know, the asphalt paper is different than the removal contractor. So you have one that comes through and preps areas and then the the paper will come in and knock them all out kind of in chunks um throughout the city. Uh the slurry seals are a little more impactful. So um it takes four to six hours between when they close the road and when it cures. And so the contractors, it's written in theirs that they have to do door hangers, make every uh resident aware of what's going to be slurried and where, when and where. Um what we usually see is they kind of alternate streets that you can park on the next street. Uh or, you know, just not, our plan, no outings. If you if you need to go out during that window, they'll give you the window that they expect it to be closed. And for the most part, when we've done them in the last couple of years, we're able to make it work. Uh you know, it's seems like a long time, but uh between adjacent parking and the advanced notice, um generally um we're able to make it work. Um obviously, emergency services, if they need to go through, they can, they can go in. Um so nobody would be denied any emergency access somewhere to go around.
I've got a couple of questions on that. I'm assuming it's not cost effective to do a half of the street. Let that set up and then do the other half.
So what, they usually don't. We we can talk to them about it. Um this is our only, our second go around doing series, but from my observations on it, uh you want this, you don't want a cold seam. Um so this material cures over time. And so you'd end up with a seam at some point in the travel path. But also people might not understand, they understand a road closed. But to try and allow them in, but not across, I think you'd have a really hard time controlling people not knowing what is and isn't okay to go on.
This is a big question I had. I remember one time Seaman doing what appeared to be a seal like that. They were coming along shortly behind it, not not immediately, but a little bit of time difference. And then we're actually spraying water on the unit. It was bad when you get the road opened up. Is that?
Oh, to speed up the cure?
Yeah.
Um so we know this, it's it's a pretty fast break around here. Um it's really dry, uh low humidity. Um so there isn't much they can do to speed up. Um it does have a polymer in it, which helps. Uh I believe helps with those sorts of things. It also helps compatibility with our aggregates and all that. But uh um I think they've got it down as short as they can get it um as far as the rapid break. Sometimes some of those accelerants might help with that, but it would reduce the durability. So we got to be careful not to compromise in the long term, the longevity over an extra hours.
Thank you.
Yep. Um so getting into the financials, so others, uh eight hundred and seventy thousand available uh for this project between the two. Um that includes, we had a line, I think it was seven hundred and fifty thousand specifically to uh Move Mo Street Maintenance, but we also had some professional services um within the Streets Department that uh because of some changes with the batch plant, they're able to do more. I think more crack sealing that was going to be contracted in-house, which is freeing up some of that contract money for street maintenance. And so uh between those two pots uh creates eight hundred and seventy thousand. Um if you combine the two low bids here, we're at one point zero one seven million, um which is a hundred and forty-eight thousand over budget. So with this, we do have two options. One is to reduce the scope. The slurry seals are pretty specialized mobilization and it's a nice block. So I don't think we reduce the scope in the slurry seal. If we were to reduce the scope, we would reduce the amount of patching and lower that contract to bring it back into budget. Um or we could use um savings from other projects if you guys choose to do so um to try and net out. And obviously, if if the budget goes over the end of the year, it'd be part of a subtle. So like, that's a decision point for for today. Um and Bill just got back from vacation, so surprised. Sorry. Um but uh um so I think for discussion of how we want to approach that, we do have options either way, um to still have a project to move forward. Like with that, happy to turn over.
Any, any questions? Thank you. I think streets maintenance is is the backbone of what city government does. It's it's not exciting, but it is, it is necessary. It's important. I think everyone will um complain about the detours and the impact on their local commutes. Um but then when it's over, as always, be really thankful that the city is taking care of its streets. Bill, do you have recommendations on how we go about the budgeting part of of these projects?
I think the so as Scott mentioned, we have the two options that we normally use. We can improve it at the regular meeting when we approve the contract. Planning to use undesigned funded balance, or we are tracking to come in under budget so far on our capital items. And so I would almost lean toward uh going that route and seeing at the end of the year how we come out. And if we need to add that into our supplemental, we can, but we don't have to if we if we balance out and we're not over budget of the entire general fund or capital fund.
What was our projected savings on the Woodgate realignment, you said?
One ninety, I think with the abatement and that figured in there now. Maybe one ninety other.
So I I see value in pursuing that.
Yeah, I think when you start looking at the streets, potholes and things like that, they would probably get more comments in that area because so many people run into them and run over them. So I think that's always an issue. Also, we have state and federal highways going through our community. Do they do the patching on those or are we responsible within the city?
Within the city, we do small scale maintenance, uh so like pothole, limited potholes. Um good news, it's actually looking like it's going to come through. Um there's likely to be an overlay project on Townsend uh starting in twenty twenty two possibly. Um none of that's finalized, um but since early stages, that would be a huge boost for our town. You know, Town Townsend really is in need of an overlay. Um so they take care of the larger scale maintenance like that. We might have some utility projects ahead of that peripheral of that. But uh um for the most part, we do piling and potholes, right, sweeping, sweeping. Yep, um within that reimburse us uh so much for lane mile for that type of work.
Great. I don't see any further questions. I think council likes that direction that you um you recommended for the budgeting of this project. That is to see how the overall budget comes in at the end of the year. Um and hopefully we can, we don't have to allocate additional funds. But we can, we need to. Um, great. Okay. Next is pavement marking contract recommendation. And this goes to our public works manager, Jim Shy. Who is going to tell us about pavement marking on that recommendation.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Couldn't let Scott have all the fun.
Yeah.
Um so pavement marking uh contract award, this is uh something we do regularly. Um we did one last year as well. Um the reason we're back this year doing it again is because there was a price change. So we rebid it out. Um we issued an RFP uh for pavement marking and this is uh long line striping, so center line and side stripes throughout town, crosswalks, roundabouts. Um basically every um paint on the street we do every year. Um and then with um, once we get long lines and crosswalks done, we go into like parking stalls, parking lots, things like that and get those. Um not every year, but um as often as we can. Um and so this, we we bid this out as per line item. They give rates per uh per item and I include that in the packet. There's, you know, fifty different types of things that we will have them do for us, all which come with a different rate. Um and so they price those out individually, um but our contract with them is on to not to exceed amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, which is what we budgeted. Um the only thing significant this year that's different from the past is that um there was some major uh complications in the supply chain this year, mainly from Texas, because they had the um some really cold weather early this year. And um we have a couple of different major suppliers, Dow and um Exxon that are claiming force majeure. So this is the first time actually I've seen this come through. Um but it's because of unforeseen conditions in their area that they um cannot guarantee the availability of the supplies needed for this pavement marking. Um and it's the two suppliers that that make this type of product. Um and so the uh the price they are, they're holding a pricing, but they're not guaranteeing the availability of the the products needed to make the marking. Um they are, and they're getting back into operation, but apparently they lost um quite a bit there earlier this year and um don't have a supply for what they would normally sell in a year. Um so with that, um I would be asking to be able to bring this to council tomorrow night. And I know it's not normal and that's very, an accelerated process to get this approved, but the reason is to get in their line as soon as possible. Um we didn't record, we didn't know this was coming. Actually, we issued this RFP in time to be ready to start marking pavement, you know, late April. Um but we found out through the bidding process that there's this is an issue and that's why we would uh, we would request that it comes to council tomorrow um instead of waiting two weeks, because it could actually make a difference in how much material is available for us to mark all of our streets this year. Um so with that, I would take any questions, but again, it is a a not to exceed contract of uh one thirty-five, which is budgeted.
Jim, have we ever used, I know some places they've done like a hot plastic seal of of striping. Have we ever used that or is that?
In the roundabouts, yeah, that's um I am drawing a blank on what that's called.
Thermal plastic.
Thermal plastic, yeah. We use those in the roundabouts mainly. Um and some crosswalks.
Does it just not feasible for paint as a replacement for paint, striping itself?
Um no, it's far more expensive. Um so usually they'll even um grind some of the areas that that's applied. And then, yeah, it's very expensive. So that's why it's only used in those high traffic areas and And then, yeah, it's very expensive. So that's why it's only used in those high traffic areas and, and some of the, um, more critical pedestrian crossings.
Thank you. So what would be the impact of not doing all the stripes? I mean, what, what does that cause?
Um, they did, they fade, you know, so if we didn't do them all, there would likely be some that, um, were not as visible by the end of the year, you know? Um, crosswalks definitely would be our highest concern that we would want to get those, um, primarily, but obviously even center line striping is very important. So, um, you know, we would do our highest priorities first and, and work down some of the lower line. If we didn't have enough to get everything, we would probably just prioritize, uh, on, you know, road usage and, and amount of vehicles on a road and get those first.
So, so they really become a public safety hazard if they're fading.
Yeah, definitely.
I think as a result, it's really critical that we take care of this.
I agree.
Yeah, I think you've made a good case for why we see it in vote on it tomorrow night. We want to get in line before they run out of paint.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last, um, discussion item. So now we'll go to general city council discussions. Um, do, do you want to say anything? You want to save your comments for tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Mr. Frank, do you want to say anything? Maybe address a special event happening tomorrow at Rotary?
Well, please. Uh, so city council has agreed to do a proclamation honoring Montrose Rotary's 100 year anniversary. And we will be proclaiming tomorrow, April 6th, that's Montrose Rotary Day in Montrose. And we're also going to be kind of in conjunction with the county, as I understand. And, uh, we'll be issuing that proclamation tomorrow at Rotary at lunch. And it's going to be a kickoff of a great 100 year celebration for, uh, very active social and, uh, public servant group in Montrose. And it's going to be a great opportunity.
I have one question dealing with our crosswalks downtown. When you push the button and the signs flash, if you're actually standing where the, where you're going to cross, I don't think you can see the flash. So you really don't know that the signs have come on and it's safe to try to cross that. That's something we can take a look at.
We can check on, they should have a little hockey pucks on the back for that very purpose. Yeah. So, um, they're supposed to have a little puck that by radio also flashes so that you know that it's on, um, behind the sign. We'll check to make sure, I guess. Um, yeah, street crews, yeah. Should, if, if they're, if they're missing, it's because, you know, somebody, maybe they fell off or somebody.
It just seemed like I've seen people over time shift the flasher and I stopped the lighters on and nobody's crossing the line. And the day I went down there and pushed the button and I'm looking around, trying to figure out if it stopped or not.
Yeah, we can check into, yeah, we can check. There should be a flasher on the backside of the sign. I think it's just a single dot. Then flashes at the same time as the other side. So you can see it. Um, but we have had issues with them before. So I, we can check it out.
Maybe I'm just not tall enough to see it.
Pick it lower.
Okay. Any other, uh, tomorrow, uh, tomorrow's meeting, can you talk about spring cleanup? And what them, and what folks can, when it's happening and what kinds of things people can bring and who can bring them?
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Well, I just also wanted to point out that we have Mike Duncan retired. And after, was it 23 years, 25 years, 23 years? Uh, hard work and dedication toward the city of Montrose that we're going to miss his dedication. And we wish him the best of luck at retirement.
Yeah, we had, we had a couple of employees retire after, after many years of service.
Actually, three.
Okay. Um, I don't have the whole list in front of me. Okay. We'll talk about that tomorrow night. Um, anything else for work session? Great. Okay. Then we will, um, see you all tomorrow. We have a regularly scheduled city council meeting at 6:00 PM tomorrow. Um, same format as we changed here going into April, which is for council and some staff to be present in chambers and to have the meeting done, um, online, streaming it or watching it, and also to allow for public participation that way. So while there isn't public participation in work sessions, tomorrow night's council meeting will have our regularly scheduled public participation. So there'll be an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, bringing public comments. And for each agenda item on which council's voting, there is always an opportunity for a public comment. And that can be done via phone or online with Zoom. And our, um, the city clerk is a great resource if anyone's wishing to participate and looking for a little more help and information. Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Work session is over.